I'd like to call a meeting into order and welcome everybody to the March 27, 2018, Laverne Planning Commission at 7:21 PM. First item of business, we do have a quorum. We'll be approving the meeting minutes for February 27, 2018, regular meeting.
Make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept or submit it. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. First item of business, site plan requested by Huddleston Steel for Blair Road Storage Property located on Blair Road, tax map 29, parcel 20, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Property owned by Mr. John Burns. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some of you all are familiar with this property. It's been here a few times before. And this is a facility to be built on Blair Road. It is zoned industrial and the new facility will be composed of 119,000 square feet. And of this amount, 900 square feet is being devoted to office use. This parcel is contained in the South Waldron Overlay District, so there are some upgrades to the architectural elevations that we'll discuss a little bit later. They have addressed over a period of months, I think, maybe going back to last November, November or December. They have worked through all the staff comments. There was an issue with sewer in that area. And I think that's, they've reached a solution on that. And all other, at the workshop two weeks ago, all other comments have been addressed except they had submitted these perspective drawings that show sort of the ridgeline in the background. And based on discussion from the workshop two weeks ago, they came back and submitted new elevations. So that's the updated elevation for the office and some of the storage units. You can see the garage doors in the distance. And then the percentages are included, and those are in your packets. And there was a fence discussed at last workshop two weeks ago. And I know at that time, I think Mr. Gerald discussed some details of the fence and maybe columns and whatnot. So I'm not sure where the fence lies tonight or if there was a final decision made on that. But other than that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Leach if he has anything. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Board. All the engineering technical comments have been corrected at this point. They do show the sewer connection, which was the initial holdup in crossing the road and going into the, which would actually go into Smyrna's Drainage Basin. Once everything is complete, on another project, there'll be seen later tonight, Portico Place.
Any other comments, Coach?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the engineer, please.
If you would state your name and address for the record, sir.
Enam Gerald with Huddleston Steel Engineering.
On the Blair Road itself, on the deceleration lane and the sidewalk that's proposed to be put in, did we move that back towards the property so when we do widen Blair Road that that's going to be taken into consideration?
Yes, sir. And I did send a PDF of that to Beau, and I'd be glad to bring that to you. What was done is we've moved it by, the dashed would be the future road widening edge of pavement. So we're going to build 12-foot turn lane plus seven, seven feet of widening. So we're going to build 19 feet here to go ahead and build that now and move the sidewalk back so it wouldn't have to be in the way in the future. So we have it.
So just to, I don't understand, so the way it was originally drawn in sort of the workshop, the sidewalk we put in, but then when we widened the road, we had to dig the sidewalk back up again. So what I've asked the applicant to do is to move the sidewalk back towards their property and to put the deceleration lane in to include the additional lane that we plan to put in at a later date. So it's all covered by the applicant and not the city.
Very good.
That was just something I called.
And on all that satisfactory on the part?
Yes.
What is the, on the technical items, what are you referring to, Mr. Logan, on the architectural standards?
Those I left in there today just because I want to get the fence. I want to get the fence finalized. I didn't know if the applicant was still, you know, if the fence was just going to the bare minimum or was, because there was a lot of discussion, I know, I think some members asked two weeks ago that they do both, that they improve the look of the buildings and improve the fence. So elevations were submitted, but the fence has not really been.
Mr. Gerald, can you give us a?
Sure. Originally, we proposed to make a decorative fence instead of dressing up front of the building. At the last planning commission workshop, the discussion was that it's really the building had to be upgraded. The fence wasn't really included. So we've upgraded the building with brick between the doors and a hard coat stucco above it to meet the ordinance. The fence will just go back to chain link fence along the front. The fence is 150 feet from the road. We've got it landscaped well. You're really not going to see it anyway. So the fence will be chain link, and then we've upgraded the building elevation.
Is it, if I may ask, do you know if it's going to be just normal chain link galvanized or are you going to use?
It's a normal chain link galvanized. Now, the gates itself and the entry will be, as per that picture, they'll be metal and decorative. But the fence itself, which will be really hidden by the landscaping, will be just a standard galvanized chain link fence.
Is that, do you see that on there? Is it on there?
It's, it's, do you have the, sort of the picture elevation? Well, there was a.
Couple different ones. But this is one elevation in that, and then this is the other one with the brick fence and the gates. I don't know if y'all got it.
Is, is the fence on the plat?
Yes, it's on, it's on, it's been called out.
And the chain link is?
It's called out as, it's called out as a six-foot chain link fence. My knowledge, we don't have anything prohibiting that in this particular zoning.
Perfect.
Beau could probably weigh in better.
I don't think there's any stipulation on the fence material.
I mean, I think the gist of our questioning on it was either the fence or the building. And you said that you've upgraded.
We've upgraded the building, correct.
To meet the overlay.
Right.
So I guess what I'm trying to ask staff is, is it okay to X this out?
Yes, one will come off.
Okay.
One just comes off. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions?
Just understanding the lay of the land, you know, the beautification page you put on, you're totally satisfied you can get that amount of trees and shrubbery onto, as drawn, you can get these?
Yes.
Because obviously, it's a big concern at the end.
Yeah. One that's going to be tough is the buffer against the residential because it's a lot of landscaping. Everything out front will look really well. The buffers, there's so many trees and bushes, half of them end up dying, but we'll put them in. That's what the orders require.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from the board? That will entertain a motion.
Make motion accept or submit.
Make a motion to accept or submit it. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Next item of business. Site plan requested by Chet Rhodes for Car Pros Auto Sales, property located at 5397B Murfreesboro Road, tax map 18B Group B, parcel 14.05, C2 Highway Service Zoning District, property owned by Magdi Loza. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. On behalf of his client, Mr. Chet Rhodes is requesting the site plan approval for the property located at 5397B Murfreesboro Road. At present, this is an active business on this site, and the applicant is proposing minor changes. They're only constructing additional impervious area. They're not adding any buildings and not making any additions to any buildings. And the staff comments have been addressed. Number one, the six-foot sidewalk is shown on the site, and the vicinity map was added. So there's no technical comments for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just want to understand, Mr. Logan, so presently, they are using a shared driveway. Is that, the way it's drawn, is that not going to happen? They're going to add a driveway to this?
No, I don't, they're not adding any.
They're not adding a driveway.
Driveway.
Because I'm just, just the way it lays in there. Because there was an issue on this property when we first did this transaction was that we ensured that the ownership of the property on the right gave the approval for the easement for him to drive through and use that driveway to make sure that's still in place.
Did we, we covered that in the last time it came before us, correct, Mr. Coach?
Yeah, he did. He did.
And make sure it's duly noted?
I'm here for questions. Mr. Logan needs to speak.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions for the?
Yeah, I do. Just, so the existing building is there, and it looks like you're going to add some other buildings. Is that the intent?
Yeah, and do you see the site plan? We don't see that here, but what's going on is all in the back of the existing building. What happened, they built a concrete pad to the left in the area where he's lighting it up with the red now. He would also like to extend that pad further to the right. And in the far right corner, we are building a small detention area to address the drains as part of the site plan. So it's very minor, but we are adding a little impervious area, and we are addressing that by the stormwater calculations and the dentists.
So on the buffer, are you putting any shrubbery in there to buff from the people that you?
We've added landscaping plan per the requirements. Yes, sir.
If you would, come to the podium and state your name and address, sir, just for the record.
My name's Chet Rhodes, and with Rhodes Engineering out of Columbia, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Rhodes?
You said you're going to have a building. You're going to, on the concrete slab, are you, did you say you're building another building?
No, no other buildings. This is a concrete slab that they built. They're trying to clean it up in the back of the building. All those junk cars are gone now.
Okay.
And there is a concrete pad on half of it.
Okay.
Work was stopped in progress, and they want permission to finish what they started. They basically started work without a permit. And, you know, I got involved after that and trying to help them do it correctly and address the drainage. And staff made us aware in the middle of this project, a month or two ago, that actually complaints from the building to the left was that it was flooding. When they told me there was a drainage problem affecting the neighbors, I assumed the flow goes down this way in the ditch at the top. I assumed it was there, and I went out there to figure out who it was. But the staff told me it was actually behind the thing. And then I went to look to see how that was occurring. It was an easy fix. We fixed it, I think, the same day that staff told me about that problem. So I think that's been addressed, but I appreciate them telling me that because I would have never figured that out on my own, but anyway.
Very good. Thank you, sir, for that.
The distance between your building and the building to the left, it's there?
That's an existing setback. We're not changing that at all. We're not adding any buildings here. The pavement behind the existing building is in line with, back to the property line. Do you all have the site plans here in front of you?
He probably, we just, with limited space, we don't.
No, that's fine. No, that's good.
The reason I'm asking is, would we, in case of, can you drive a vehicle, namely a fire truck or anything through there?
You can drive a fire truck up to the front of the building to fight the fire now, and that's where, we're not changing the front lot at all. All the work we're doing is in the back.
Okay.
And the access to the front, TDOT wants to restrict access to the Murfreesboro Road, so it'd be hard to get another driveway. I did inquire if the owner wanted to do that, and the city said, wow, good luck, but, you know. So we, you know, that may be something we pursue with TDOT, and if we're successful, we'll be back here with a new site plan, but that's a separate issue.
That's been an ongoing.
Yeah. I mean, the owner would like to have a better drive, but that's, there's issues getting that there at this time.
Any other questions or comments? That will entertain a motion.
At this point, with all technical items being addressed, I make a motion to accept or submit it.
Motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next item, site plan requested by Chet Rhodes for Super Mercado Mexican Restaurant, property located at 5265 Murfreesboro Road, tax map 14, Group B, parcel 3, C2 Highway Service Zoning District, property owned by Abnan Shreeman. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this request was also here in February, and this site is located at 5265 Murfreesboro Road. It is the former TDS building, and it's zoned C2, of course. And the owners or new owners will be remodeling the building and changing the use to a Super Mercado and Market. And the, it is an existing building, and there's three buildings on the site. And the overlay district stipulates that unless you do a 50% or greater addition to an existing building, you don't have to comply with the overlay design standards. So please disregard any reference to the overlay standards in the report. They are shown a sidewalk along Murfreesboro Road, which is required and was talked about at the workshops. And there is no, also, number two, that all new signs, including the refacing of existing signs, shall comply with the sign ordinance. No digital signs and no neon signs will be allowed, as well as any signs that blink or are otherwise animated. So those signs would not be allowed on this site. And other than that, all technical comments were addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board? No questions or comments. We'll entertain a motion.
All technical items being addressed, make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, sir? We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. We're going to move four, five, and six to the end of the meeting. We will go on to number seven. Item number seven, site plan requested by Civil Site Design Group for Mini Storage Depot, property located at 5605 Murfreesboro Road, tax map 18F, parcel 1, C2 Highway Service Zoning District, parcel owned by JR Properties Management, LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This request is for a self-storage facility. Requested by Civil Site Design Group on behalf of their client, and this facility will consist of approximately, well, the first building and largest, which is building B on your plan, would be 45,000 square feet. And the office space that they're proposing would be 1,050 square feet. And they are proposing RV and boat parking at the rear. And there are nine car parks with the current plan, and that plan may change. They did request a variance to the 220-foot setback from the Boza tonight, and they did not receive the variance. So the office building will have to be moved beyond this line that I'm pointing to at the red. So the building, that's 220 feet from edge of pavement. So this is the office, and that office will move back. And also, the sidewalk that's required on Murfreesboro Road is shown, and this property also is in the overlay district. And they have upgraded the architectural finishes to meet those standards of the overlay district. And I think, I think that covers everything. There's two comments. I'll let Mr. Leach cover those. That's all. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, Board, two comments I have are to the location of the reduced pressure backflow device and fire meter. They're currently shown inside the site. Beau, can I see the pointer?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, this drawing doesn't show the whole extent to where we need to be, but they're showing the backflow preventer and the fire meter back here that would put them inside the site. Our meter techs wouldn't be able to necessarily get easy access to that if there was a problem in the middle of the night, et cetera. So if you go on further back here to Mill Drive is where the water line will actually come. I request that they move everything back into our right-of-way where it can be easily accessed. They're also showing this easement, which is from a different property owner, is being dedicated to the city. One, you can't dedicate property via site plan, and two, we don't really want it dedicated to us. So I would prefer it be a private easement.
Very good. Any other comments?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Is there a representative from this project here this evening?
Sean DeCosta, Civil Site Design Group, 2305 Klein Avenue, Nashville, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir. Well, since there's a couple of items that need to be taken care of anyways, you're going to have to, I guess, resubmit a site plan anyhow to move the building. You just want to go ahead with the deferral, and we'll start whittling away at everything?
Yes, sir.
Consider that a formal request for a deferral on this item. We will see you next month, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. On to our next item. Number eight, site plan McDonald's Corporation requested by Martin Engineering Surveying for McDonald's remodel, property located at 5147 Murfreesboro Road, tax map 15, parcel 2.10, C2 Highway Service Zoning District, property owned by McDonald's USA LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. You remember from the workshop, the McDonald's located right here, close to City Hall, at 5147 Murfreesboro Road, will be completely revamped, and they will be making changes to, a lot of changes to the outside. The red manseled roof will be removed, and they'll go, they'll be extending the parapets up on all the sides. So the building will get a little taller, and those parapets will cover the roof-mounted equipment, the roof-mounted HVAC equipment. Currently, the building is 4,092 square feet. That is not changing. There are 48 car parks indicated on the plan, and there's already an existing sidewalk, as you can see it here in the image. So that's, the sidewalk is taken care of. The property does lie in the South Waldron Overlay District, and so on the elevations, they have increased the amount of brick that's going on the actual facades. And other than that, one thing they're, one reason they're doing these changes is to get all their slopes to be consistent and ADA accessible, and so they're going to accomplish that with these changes. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board? No questions or comments. We'll entertain a motion.
All technical items being addressed. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept or submit it. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. On to our next item. Number nine, final plat cottages of Lake Forest Phase 7 requested by Danny Womble, property located on Hollin Ridge Road, tax map 14, PO parcel 6, R3, High Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Abnan Shreeman. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This request is from Mr. Danny Womble on behalf of his client, and they are requesting final plat approval for 58 lots on 10.53 acres. And this phase will have two new public streets, including Westcott Drive and Conner Court. And all the technical items have been addressed. There's a general note that the plat contains a horizontal property regime that will be submitted via site plan, so that will be, it's already been submitted, it'll be here in April for the planning commission meeting.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Logan or the applicant? No questions or comments? We'll entertain a motion.
Make motion to accept or submit it.
Motion to accept. Do we have a second? We have a second.
I'm sorry, can we get the clarification on the second, please? Thank you.
Mr. King? We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next item, number 10. Final plat Lake Woods Phase 10 requested by Danny Womble, property located on Hollendale Road, tax map 6, parcel 19.02, R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Abnan Shreeman. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. Once again, Womble Associates is requesting final plat approval for Phase 10 of Lake Woods, and this is zoned R2 Medium Density Residential. And they are proposing 16 single-family lots on 5.77 acres. And this phase proposes two new public streets, and both of these will be interior public roads. And except for one, all the items have been addressed, and I'll let Mr. Leach.
My apologies. That item has been addressed on the latest revision, so it was a minor drafting error which was corrected.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions or comments from the board? Entertain a motion.
The items being addressed. Make motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept or submit it. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next item. Final plat Cambridge Court requested by Danny Womble, property located on Floyd Mayfield Drive, tax map 14, PO parcel 72, R3 High Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by HJA Laverne LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This final plat is for Cambridge Court, and it is zoned, excuse me, R3, so it's high density. And this plat constitutes 64 dwelling units on approximately 3.91 acres. And this plan will propose to extend George Buchanan Drive to the west. And George Buchanan Drive is a private road, and when extended, it will connect to Floyd Mayfield Drive. And all of the technical items have been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board? Entertain a motion.
All technical items being addressed. Make motion to accept.
We have a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next item. Preliminary plat requested by SEC Inc. for Portico Place Subdivision, Section 2, tax map 29, PO parcel 20.04, property located on Blair Road, PDR Plan Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Terry Rasmussen. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This request is for the approval of the preliminary plat of Portico Place, and the property was rezoned six months ago in September from R1 and I1 to PDR. And this plat proposes 130 lots, all single-family lots. There's no townhomes, and there's no apartments proposed in this development. The lot ranges, the lot widths, excuse me, range from 41 to 46 feet. And they, this is consistent with the design booklet that was approved at the time of rezoning six months ago. They are proposing changes to the curves in Blair Road. I think they're going to soften some of those and widen them. I'll let Mr. Leach speak to that. Thanks.
Mr. Leach, if you can elaborate, sir?
Yes, sir. I've included in the general notes on your report kind of a brief synopsis of the traffic impact that this development will be having. Additionally, they do plan to soften the curve there just outside of, as you can see there. That'll include four-foot shoulders, basically changes in the radius to make it a little more easily traversed. It is going for a 30 mile per hour design speed, which is consistent with the rest of the roadway, so it'll generally tie everything together well. For the traffic impacts, there was concern noted by members of the commission. They did provide us traffic impact analysis. The level of service for every intersection which this would potentially impact is at C or better. C is considered fairly good for most of these type intersections, especially non-signalized ones. Level of service is based on a scale from A being there's essentially zero wait time to F being you're waiting long enough to be really annoyed. C is basically your average stop sign. So with that being said, you typically wouldn't ask for any additional improvements because they're only moderate impacts. Additionally, I did request that they do a Additionally, I did request that they do a calculated flood study because the creek is not shown on a FEMA map, but as we all know, creeks hold water. Water gets up, and then we have angry neighbors. There's only one lot that would potentially be impacted. I've included that lot in the notes. It's not really a technical comment at this time because it can be addressed in the final plat, but for that particular lot, the base floor elevation of that home should be elevated two feet above that calculated flood plane.
And that can be addressed in the final plat. Note that, this lot right there.
Couple of questions, a couple of staff. So on, on the, the potential widening of Blair Road, are we getting the requirement of the roads on their side, the fence, that we need to widen Blair Road?
Can you repeat that, Mr. Coats?
So like the applicant on the other side of the street, ask them to, to give the right of way, so then at some point in time, we can widen the road? Is that being facilitated with this drawing?
Essentially, what they're doing is they're giving us this right of way to make, they're going to build this, of course, so they're giving us that right of way, so we'll still have the right of way on this side for any future widening.
Yes, but from that curve all the way around to Portico Place, are we getting the right of way so we can widen Blair Road?
It was not specifically requested, and since it's not in our transportation plan, I usually can't request it from a strictly engineering standpoint. Of course, the commission can ask anything it likes if it would, you know, facilitate the project.
I think the applicants here, we discussed this when they come in with, with their concept plan, so it's just, I just want to just, it's an important road for us. There's a lot of issues with Blair Road, and this is the time to, to access the right of way, so.
Name and address for the record, sir.
John Miner with SEC at 850 Mill Tennessee Boulevard in Murfreesboro.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Coats?
We had the question, the right of way from, on the property that you presently own, can we have the right of way so we can widen Blair Road?
We are, we are dedicating right of way with the curve, and we thought that was sufficient.
Because we're just going to back ourselves up here, and the rest of the board is, if we're just going to do the curve and not do the rest of it, it could be an issue. I mean, Blair Road is an issue already. This is the time to get it widened.
I agree.
This is at...
I don't think it's something that we can address in meeting. Do you want to ask the applicant if you'd like to come back to workshop so we can address that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Absolutely, please.
This is just the preliminary plat, of course, so he will be coming back again. So there is that chance to have the discussion with the applicant in the future.
Okay.
So I'm not making any recommendations one way or the other. I'm just giving the option to the board.
So obviously, you heard staff and our recommendations that, you know, we'd like to see the right of way along your property that you, you control so we can widen Blair Road to assist not only the city, its present citizens, but obviously the new citizens that are going to purchase from you.
Well, my question is, is how much more right of way are you requesting? Because we're kind of going in 30 feet, I think. Adam might correct me on that.
I believe the current right of way out there is 30 feet. Typical section that we see in this city is a 50-foot right of way, which you can shoehorn a three-lane section into if you need to. And this is, of course, purely at the recommendation level. These areas here are common areas. The only one, one lot could be, these lots would be potentially impacted. This is common area, this is common area, so these aren't actually lots along this way, except for that one.
So basically, you have two lots that would impact. The rest is, I mean, so Blair Road is a very poor road at the present time.
Correct.
We do appreciate you softening the curve, but we really would appreciate you ensuring that we get the right of way organized so that we can widen the road to facilitate the present citizens as well as new citizens who come in with this, this phase. Now, one other question for you. It's not in Laverne, but the, the junction of Sam Ridley and Blair Road is terrible.
Correct.
There's been some discussion with Smyrna.
Sorry, Joe.
With the impact you're going to have, you know, we would like you to, to work with the town of Smyrna to improve that junction. At the moment, it just doesn't function. With the amount of homes you're going to put in, it's not going to, it's not going to assist any...
It's not going to improve it, yes.
They're, they're aware that you're going to be talking to them about that, because the staff's made them aware of that, but, you know, I would, I would like to see you, you work with the town of Smyrna and get that junction so it's functional.
We've already received engineering comments from the town of Smyrna, and it's gone through the planning commission, and that has not been a question addressed to us yet.
Okay.
And was that included as the C intersection in the traffic port?
Yes, that, that current intersection operates at a level of service of a low B. The addition of these homes raises it to a high C, which is, it would be three to four seconds more wait as opposed to the 10 to 15 seconds, which is currently normal.
Just a suggestion, go out there at 7:30 tomorrow morning and have a look.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just, just, I mean, you know...
I've, I've driven in the site, but it was 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and I think when I pulled up to the intersection, two other cars pulled up on, in the other directions. So I could see that that is potentially going to be an issue, but not currently, at least from a engineering, transportation standpoint, according to the report.
One of the other things we have to take into consideration, too, once these houses get underway, you're going to have buses, and we've already got problems with buses on Blair Road as far as being able to maneuver. So obviously, they're going to, it doubles, not triple, because we're adding 164.
Two homes, roughly 360.
Yeah, we're adding more homes, and there are going to be kids out there that are going to have to catch the bus. So it, it's, I, I don't think there's going to be a part that's going to be able to be negotiated with that junction that he's talking about and Blair Road itself. We've got to get, I mean, it's either you do it now when you start breaking ground, or it's going to have to be torn back up when they...
When it becomes more of an issue.
Yeah.
Are we currently discussing anything with Smyrna planning in regards to this intersection?
We've...
We may all need to get on the same page before we...
I, I think the best way to probably handle this is, I'll get with Tom, we'll get in the same room, and Matthew will, will sit down, kind of put our heads together, see if there's a mutually equitable solution. And as I mentioned, we're, we're preliminary right now, which this is the time to have these discussions, so.
So do we need to add the dedicated right of way to preliminary?
We can do it at the final. If that's acceptable to the board, that's your prerogative.
We'll take the board's opinion on that and open it up for a motion at this point.
Well, can I say something first?
Absolutely, Mr. King. Please do.
I want to make everybody mad, especially Mr. Coats over there.
That's what we're here for.
I feel like when we got an engineer and planning, city planner, that when we sort of download him, he made a motion that he checked everything out, it looked good at this time, and he checked other things out, and then we turn around and contradicting him, we want this anyway. Why do we need a city engineer if we're going to do this? I mean, I think we ought to think about that. These people work hard.
Oh, yes.
Then we turn around and just knock their pants off.
I, I agree wholeheartedly and understand your comment, Mr. King, and to address it. Normally, I don't think we'd have a real big problem with it, but with this being such a major intersection next to the city of Smyrna, we don't rarely, we rarely get to deal with them, so, and this is a pretty big project.
You're putting somebody else, you're putting him in a problem because he's done been told what he can do. Now, we out here changing it and going voting on it, we should be voting, well, he's the man over recommended, not what we want. I mean, we've got people that work for, for this committee. We send them out there, they, they make their decision what they think is right, and they say it's okay. Then we turn around and say no, and so, I just feel like, and I'm not against anybody here, I understand where Graham's coming from, I understand where you're coming from.
Yes.
And that's true, but that should have been brought up in the workshop, not now.
Mr. King, let me just explain. I understand what you're saying, however, at the site plan, which before Adam started, I perseverely brought up the right of way. I mean, we talked about it, and so it's been brought up before, and it's just, if you talk to the residents out there, John, you, you will, you will hear, and I'm sure Mr. Jones does, that it's, it's a terrible road. Now, I appreciate them doing the improvement of the roads, but this is the time to do it. This is the time to improve Blair Road. And with the impact of two lots, two lots on 160-plus homes, I think it's very minimal. At the end of the day, it'll make it more supportive for his potential clients who are going to buy these homes, and there's nothing against that. I think Adam was involved in this on the preliminary plat, I don't think he was involved with it. He's come in after the fact. But I mean, to ask the right of way so we can get the, the road widened where it should be, as has been discussed previously, I don't think it's an issue at all. And with that, I, I have no problem pushing off onto the final. I have no problem with that, so you can draw it up, and we can move ahead with this one. But under understanding, as far as I'm concerned, that the right of way must be given for the widening of Blair Road, as well as some improvements to the junction of Sam Ridley. Obviously, that's out of our hands, it's not on the city, but, you know, we need to work together as a group, and that junction, that road, just, we need to, this is the time to do it. This is the time to do it. And then again, the applicant on the other side of the street, he agreed to get the right of way, and so we've been very consistent here.
Yeah. I, I agree with both parties on it. And you have addressed it, you have addressed the technical items, but, and to be totally honest with you, if, if the technical items are addressed or not, I mean, I would have to say no, simply because if it wasn't coming back up in final, then I, we, we've got to get that done. I mean, it's just, that's, Blair Road is just that albatross that's got to be fixed, and it would make all the sense in the world to do it now. I mean, as an engineer, you, you know that that would make...
It's easier to do things on the front end while you get the opportunity.
Exactly, exactly. Because the other part that you're going to, and this is a part that shouldn't affect you, but being an elected official, it affects me because I'm going to hear from the citizens, we tear the street up twice.
Correct.
Because we're, we're interrupting their livelihoods and whatever. So I, that's, I, that part, and just to address that part on there, John, I, I agree with you, and I, I value their opinion on it, and I've said many times that, you know, I wave, I mean, I defer to their expertise on it. I'm not an engineer, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't act like one. But that being said, Mr. Chairman, would you, would you go in?
I will happily entertain a motion if nobody has any other questions or comments. Thank you, Mr. King, and all the members.
Tying on to what I just said, with all technical items being addressed on this preliminary plat, I make a motion that we accept tonight.
We have a motion to accept is submitted this evening?
I'll second it.
We have a second? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Next item.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Number 13, set bond amount for Lieutenant Frank Walcup, final plat, property located off Jones Mill Road, south of Morningside Drive, Tax Map 75, Parcel 24.13. R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Adnan Shreeman. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. Mr. Wamboldt, on behalf of his client, is requesting that the planning commission set the bond amount for the improvements in the Lieutenant Frank Walcup subdivision. This subdivision, pretty small, consists of nine lots. Per the subdivision regulations, the developer has submitted three bids, an average plus the required 20% contingency and a stamp estimate provided by the engineer, and all this is in your packet. Bids are from JT Ragsdale, TNC Excavating Incorporated, and Four Star Paving. The engineer's estimate comes to $25,800 in total.
Thank you, sir. And staff is satisfied with that number?
We are.
Leach? Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board? Entertain a motion if there aren't any?
Make a motion on acceptance of the staff to accept the bond amount for Lieutenant Frank Walcup final plat at $25,800.
We have a motion to accept is submitted. Do we have a second?
Sniggerd.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion accepted. Next item. Request for recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for subdivision acceptance, McFarland Point, Phase 11, property located off Lake Road, R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Rochay and Sam's Development and Contractors. Mr. Logan, or project owned by... Mr. Logan.
Yeah, what he said before that, okay. This is for subdivision acceptance for McFarland Point, Phase 11, and this is located off Lake Road and zoned R1. And I think the only note there is from Mr. Leach, so I'll let him explain that. Thanks.
Just as some general commentary, Phase 11 of McFarland Point was probably complete maybe four or five years ago completely. The only initial holdup on acceptance was some of the ponds were built to incorrect dimensions. We have some as built that show that there's plenty of capacity in the detention ponds. Mr. Wamboldt's been excellent on getting this paperwork involved in this. I and staff have walked it in for a five-year-old subdivision. The pavement's held up very well, so we don't see any problem with moving forward on getting this bit of old business cleared up.
Thank you very much, sir. With that, any questions or comments from the board? And we will be entertaining a motion for a recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Next, we send a favorable recommendation to Mayor and Alderman.
Motion for a favorable recommendation to Mayor and Alderman. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We will be sending a favorable recommendation for the acceptance of this subdivision. Next item, number 15. Discussion of potential alternatives for the Brickside Phase 2 development off of Carruthers Road, R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Mitchell Bowman. Final plat approved in March 9th, 2014. Mr. Logan, if I'm not mistaken, we discussed this at workshop?
Yes, sir, and Mr. Leach has been handling this item, so.
Mr. Leach, if you would give us an update?
Mr. Chairman, after some discussion with the Assistant City Administrator and Legal Counsel, just, I guess I'll go ahead and recap this because some members weren't present. Originally, this project, the final plat was approved in 2004. The construction plans were approved. Everything was okay in 2004. Unfortunately, life happened in the intervening 14 years, and what was planned in 2004 couldn't, in my opinion, no longer reasonably be built without substantially impacting either existing homeowners, potential flooding of downstream personnel, or there's actually no detention that they could build for this site as originally planned due to changes in how T-Deck regulates the waterway. Because of these things, we needed to find a path forward to provide all the services that the city and the subdivision should provide to the citizens that live there, and the path that was presented to us is the widening of the Carruthers Bridge, or Carruthers Crossing, whatever you like to call it, which is currently about 16 feet wide, which is exceedingly narrow for a roadway where our typical minimum would be at least 24 feet, and that's with zero shoulders. What's been proposed would be a 32-foot section, which is a more standard, typical section. That's two 12-foot travel lanes with four-foot wide shoulders and guard rail, which is a requirement for this type of structure. The way to get to this, and the reason that we're having a discussion on it, is, one, it will require a revised plat, which is not something we've done in the past, my understanding, but we can definitely do. So just to kind of, I know there's a summary there that reads like a narrative, but I've tried to drill it down as far as I can. If there's any questions on... If there's any questions on what's the path forward, how we got here, those type of things, I'm happy to entertain them.
Very good. Now, at this juncture, it's a discussion item, so there's not really anything we can vote on. The applicant needs to, at this point, submit.
He'll submit, Mr. Logan, a revised plat. I've already been in discussion with his engineer on what our requirements will be for that revised plat. It won't look like the typical final plat that comes in because we're revising fourteen-year-old plans. So it'll be a little different, but they will include some construction plans for what the new crossing on Carruthers will look like and the detention ponds that have to be added to the semi-existing subdivision.
Very good. And the applicant is aware of the steps and procedures?
Let's hear from him, make sure he understands what's going on.
Mr. Mitchell, name and address for the record?
Name's Mitchell Bowman. I live at eleven oh five Creek Round Court, Murfreesboro.
And you're pretty much aware of what needs to be done at this point for us to move forward?
Yes, we are, and, and we have Holston working on it now. My question would be to the board and the vote would be next month. Is that the way this, and that would be the only vote that we would have to have? Yes.
Hopefully you can get everything by workshop. We'll knock out all technical items and hopefully be able to vote on it next month.
Okay, because the project's real close to finished, so we were trying to move along best we could, so thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, sir. With that, we're going to go to, back to number four. Amendment to the zoning ordinance, amend three point one one zero site plan requirement, delete fee in lieu for sidewalks presented by Mr. Coats. Mr. Logan.
So if you go back to your packet with the binder clip, the black clip, I think it's page. One, two, three. It's page five, right behind Chet Rhodes' report. And these are the comments that Adam put together.
And Nick.
Yes.
So if it's wrong, blame Nick. There you go.
We always blame the lawyer.
Well, y'all have, everyone has worked hard getting this together.
And I'll just, just, Mr. Chairman, and so the board understands where we are. I think that item four is actually an amendment to the zoning ordinance, if that's what you're looking at. I don't have the packet in front of me. I just assume that's what you're looking at. That would, of course, be today, you could take that up as a favorable and unfavorable recommendation of this for the Board of Mayor and Alderman because it's an amendment to the zoning ordinance, so the typical public hearings have to go through before you can actually pass an amendment to the zoning ordinance. Items five and six, which you'll get to next, those are actually amending the subdivision regulations, which are within the purview of this board, is the planning commission. However, there are still certain, we have to do a thirty-day notice with public hearing for those as well. That has not been done yet, so you cannot actually vote on five and six to pass because we still have to comply with our public notice requirements. But that's okay because it's going to take at least a couple of months for the amendment to the zoning ordinance to get done and up through to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. So we can, Beau and the city administrator will make sure that when the time comes to have the subdivision regulations before you, the public notice requirements will have been met. And at that point, hopefully, the amendment to the zoning ordinance will have been completed by the Board of Mayor and Alderman. So it's all kind of at the same time.
Very good.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
So you can vote though on number four today. You might want to discuss five and six if you want to.
Very good. So on item number four, entertain a motion.
Do we have an extra packet?
You, you got, you want to do this?
Do we have an extra?
It was in the packet, yeah.
This one here? Is this what you have?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It may be wiser in this particular case to talk about five and six prior to four because if, for instance, if the board likes the prepared language, you would no longer be delete, deleting the fee in lieu. You would be changing to the language that was provided. So discussing that prior to talking about deleting it might be wise.
Very good, sir. Thank you.
I think we'll just put it all together. Let's get it all together and get it.
I'm going to go ahead and read five and six and we're going to work these three together. So item number five, amendment to the subdivision regulations, amend section four dash one zero eight point one sidewalks and bicycle paths presented by Mr. Coats. And item number six, amendment to subdivision regulations, delete section four dash one zero eight point five fee in lieu for sidewalks presented by Mr. Coats. Legalities are handled. Mr. Leach.
So hopefully everyone got the email at this point. If not, you have a clean copy in front of you. What you see on the clean copy is my and Nick's attempt to make the process such that it can no longer be walked around because in the past, my understanding, and I've only been here for five months or so, was essentially that the applicants came in and told the board that they were going to do a fee in lieu. That obviously is not anyone's intention with a fee in lieu type process and doesn't meet good planning or good engineering in our opinion either. So what we have proposed are changes essentially in how the process works in that they have to submit a request to the city engineer or the city planner and have that request sealed by an engineer stating why they can't build sidewalks. This isn't a particularly, particularly onerous. Anyone can go out to a site and see if it's a twelve percent grade, that it is probably not a great place to put a sidewalk or if it's off a cliff or in an industrial area where no one would want to walk. So I think by changing that, we're getting back to the board's intent of doing the right thing in the right situation while still allowing flexibility where there's no point in building a sidewalk. Because if you've drove around Laverne a little bit, our sidewalks start and stop and we have a little stretch here and then older homes and another little stretch. So this will kind of give us, give you the option of whether you want to do it or not. And as part of the process, once Beau and I have reviewed their request, we'll give you a recommendation based on our opinion on if we feel it's reasonable. The other thing that, and Nick can feel free because he authored the better part of it. Changing the actual fee in lieu amounts, the original fee in lieu amount was three seventy-five and three fifty for sidewalks over one thousand feet. You cannot actually build a sidewalk for that. The prices that we propose are in line with T-dots standard line items. This would be building a T-dot style, four-inch thick sidewalk. This is what their average bid for forty to, or excuse me, four to five thousand square yards would be. So it's a fairly good average. They have plenty of data to back up those numbers. And I believe that's it. Nick, would you have anything?
Can I see that?
Yes, sir.
Do you have the zoning ordinance amendment?
I do not.
Beau, do you have one? I just want to see that.
Was, is that the language from like last fall?
It's number four. It's what that they can vote on today. I just want to look at that as well.
I don't have the language.
Does anybody, does the board have their packet, the amendment to the zoning ordinance?
No, we've got four dash one zero eight point five.
That's the delete section.
Okay, well, they can't vote on it unless.
They have it.
They have it. So.
What we've got going is obviously we need time for the Mayor and Alderman to do their thing too as well, so, and you need to get organized as well with.
Yeah, no, I understand, but we can't move to the Board of Mayor and Alderman on the amendment to the zoning ordinance that amends three point one one zero site plan requirements to delete fee in lieu of sidewalks unless you guys have seen that and can give a favorable and unfavorable recommendation. It doesn't sound like you've got that in your packets.
No, we do not.
Okay, well, I guess I'm not sure unless, unless we have it, Beau, and we can, we can get it to him to look at. I don't think it was very major, but they still would need to see it.
I haven't. I've not written the ordinances since I started here, so I, I'm not really familiar with how it's done here. I have written them in other cities, but it's not really been in my purview, so I, I thought that someone at City Hall wrote those.
But we can get clarification on it. Just keep going. We will, in the next workshop, let's get it pulled together so we handle all these three at the same time.
And defer to the next workshop or do you want to?
I can, I can tell you that these three things do exist, okay? They are, they are here and we do have, you've seen four dash one oh eight point five. And then I believe that there's an amendment to four dash one oh eight point one that's very, very small. It just deletes a certain section out of that, but I think it's beneficial that you all read all three together now that you have, behalf of the city.
Let's just put on, just get it all, all three together for the next workshop and then we can get it all pulled together for next month.
We're going to defer items four, five, and six to next month's workshop so we can get everything together and read. And we'll move on to the next item, item number sixteen, bonds and letters of credit. Mr. Leach.
Mr. Chair, in the back of your packet is normal. There's a summary of the current bonds outstanding and letters of credit. There's also been chronicled the changes in how many homes have been completed or went under construction. The only numbers have been steady around five hundred and thirty completed or under construction. So there was a change of one from last month overall. We have had a lot more homes completed, but we also, the ones that were completed were already under construction, so you don't really see a big change in the numbers. We haven't had any other bonds lately. Lieutenant Frank Walcup will go on the next one, but it'll be a minor bond.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from the board? With that, meeting adjourned.